All right, good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, February 8th, 2024, and welcome to the regular meeting session of the Milford School Committee. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded by Milford TV, and copies can be obtained at the request of this board or through Central Office. So our first agenda item is our student representative update. Good to see you, Vidi.
Nice to see you guys. So it's just me today because Andrew has a track and field meet. It's Hawks today for them, so it's like their last, like, normal season meet. Some of them will probably go into postseason, but that's kind of dependent on today. So we have some sports updates. Winter sports are kind of ending. I mean, it depends what sport you're doing, but most of them are done with, like, the normal season. So for swim, the 200 medley and freestyle relays and 400 freestyle relays for boys swimming are going on to sectionals, and a couple of them are going on to states as well, which is very difficult to do, so that's amazing. Basketball has a game today, and as I said, Hawks is going on today for track and field. And spring sports preseasons are starting soon. People have started, like, you know, getting their practice sessions in, doing their meetings, so that's exciting. All the students love the new calf tables. We are really appreciating them, and they're so, like, they're brand new, they're clean, there's no, like, cracks in them. It's, like, very nice. And we also noticed that, like, there's new seating by the windows, like, and we really appreciate that because sometimes you don't have, like, four people to sit with, you only have two, so it's really convenient for that, and it's, like, takes up less room at the big tables, which is nice. I know we talked about, like, temperature in classrooms a while ago. That's way better, like, I don't know what happened in between, but...
Boilers are working consistently.
The temperature's, like, way more comfy, like, we can all walk around in, like, hoodies. Some rooms might be a bit, like, warmer than others, but it's, like, not really noticeable, so that's awesome. And then several kids from the Milford Music Department made it into central districts for band orchestra and chorus, so those kids had an opportunity to play in Mechanics Hall, which was really awesome. And then some of us also made it to All States, which is also very impressive. That's all I have. I don't have any negative feedback. Everything's going great, so...
Any questions for our student rep? Yes?
No questions, but just a comment. I think that's really great to hear about the student achievements. I personally appreciate that, and sure, many of the committee do, so, you know, just best of luck to the people that are going on to states, and it's really nice to hear about both the music department and the athletics department, so thank you for that, and best of luck to all the students.
Of course, thank you.
Great. Any other questions from the side? I have one question now with the new tables and the comfort level. Do you feel that kids, students are being better at cleaning up after themselves and being more respectful to the cleaner environment that they have?
I definitely think, like, there's a difference because I have first lunch a couple days, and then I also have third lunch, so I can see the difference, like, from the beginning and the end of the day. The beginning of the day, obviously, it's very clean, and third lunch, like, before would be very, like, you know, wishy-washy and hygiene, but, like, right now, it's, like, very clean, there's, like, barely any trash anywhere. And there's also, I forgot to say this, there's, like, tables on the outside of the calf because I know, like, the calf gets crowded sometimes, so a lot of students use that as well, and that's also very clean, so...
That's great to hear. All positive, we like that, so, yes, go ahead, Megan.
So it sounds like you're going to All States?
So I got into districts and I applied to All States.
Awesome.
I did not get into All States, but I was close.
Congrats on districts. And then your course selection done for next year? Was it strange to do your final, get involved in your final round?
Yes, it's not done yet. I haven't gone to my guidance counselor yet, but it was definitely weird to think that, like, I only have three semesters left here, and then I'm, like, done, just kind of weird.
Totally, well, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Well, again, thank you very much. Really appreciate the report, and see you next month.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to approval of minutes. We have lots to go over here. All right, so the first one will be the executive session minutes from November 16th, and this is for 2023, and this is a vote to release. Just as a note, Michael, Robin, and John, you were not at that meeting. All right, so looking for a motion to accept and for release the November 16th, 2023 meeting minutes. So motion by Megan, second by Brendan, and all in favor, and that is, Erica, did you catch that? It's already in favor, and then the abstentions. All right, perfect. Next one will be the budget meeting from January 6th, 2024. Just as a note, Michael, you left the meeting at 12:25. I don't think it really has an effect on the overall, but just as a note there. So looking for a motion to accept the budget meeting minutes from January 6th, 2024. Motion by Matt, second by Michael, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Excellent. Next one will be the regular session, school committee meeting minutes from January 18th. Just to point a note, Michael, Robin, and John, you were not there at that meeting. Looking for a motion to accept the January 18th, 2024 meeting minutes.
I have one piece to add.
Okay, so, all right, so we'll go motion by Megan, and then second by Brendan. Discussion?
Okay, potential discussion, page three, the paragraph where it says, "Mr. Ricker and Mrs. Achilles seconded to approve job description with the change to bullet three." The last section in quotes, it says, "And something about accessibility." I think we were a little more specific about the line to the new SBA and the school committee's ability to reach out to them with any questions or things like that.
We can go back and look at that.
Yeah, the words that you had were a lot more focused and pointed than that, so I just didn't know if we could just clean that piece up a little bit about making it more clear about what we're talking about, accessibility between the SBA and the school committee. But we can work that out a little more if you'd like.
Yeah, I think we can go back to the tape and take a look at it.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
Is that a full dashboard?
Yeah, so basically, yeah, so there was a motion and a second, there was a revision or an unknown, some clarity there, so obviously, for the point of the motion, we'll ask for, you know, all in favor, so none in favor, and then opposed right now, so we'll just go with the opposed side of it, which is, got that, Erica? All right, then opposed, and then the abstentions. So, and then we'll revisit that, put it on the next agenda.
Can you give me that point again?
Page three. Page three of the 118 minutes. There's a quote of "and something about accessibility," and that was just a more clear statement about accessibility between SBA and school committee.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Thanks.
Yep?
All right, next one will be the executive session minutes from January 18th, 2024. This is a vote for approval only. Just a point of reference, Meg, Brendan, Matt, and myself were the ones present for that one. All right, so looking for a motion to approve, for approval only, the January 18th, 2024 executive session. Motion by Megan, sorry, couldn't get those words out, second by Matt, and then in favor, and that is the four in favor. Great. Last one is the budget meeting held on January 23rd, 2024. Michael, you were not there on that one, just a point of reference, so looking for a motion for, to accept those meeting minutes. Motion by Robin, second by Matt.
I have a comment for this one, too. Last page of this, right above the heading that says "Items to Revisit," I would assume FinCon would not be happy with a $200 million field turf project, so we'll knock that down to $2 million, which was, I believe, what your request was.
Correct, yes. Good catch on that one.
That'd be a heck of a field.
So we can, all right, we can just go ahead and do high school right there, that'd be great.
So we will, so this was a motion and a second with a simple revision that we can capture.
And by the way, you get the one that lasts for 200 million.
Two hundred, yes, exactly, yes.
Chris wants to run.
Glad I moved right over that one. So with the revision of the field request to be 2 million, not 200 million, so, all right, in favor of that, that is...
Which one are we on?
Sorry, that was the budget meeting for January 23rd. You were present at that.
I'm in, I'm in on that one.
So the six in favor, then the abstention from Michael.
I was focused on who was there and who wasn't.
The other aspect of, all right, very good. So moving on to announcements, correspondence, and distribution. Start with the committee members. Any announcements, correspondence?
So last night, it was my turn to sit through a third grade strings concert. To be honest, if I tell you, I was a little scared to know that 200 kids with violins were walking into that room in the auditorium. They were absolutely fantastic. I just wanted to give my credit to Mrs. Knapp from Woodland and all of the music teachers. They had staff and students, even from the Milford High School Band there last night, trying to organize the chaos of shifting these students on and off the stage. They had to do three groups because of how many there were. They sounded, they sounded really, really good, and the excitement just in the students you could see in their playing and their supporting their peers, how much music really means to these kids, even on third grade, and I was just, I was thoroughly impressed. And I also wanted to share that I received multiple comments along with what I noticed of the auditorium space, which was very much like the cafeteria, in the best shape I've seen it in in a while, and I've heard from multiple people saying that they were really happy to see how clean it was, how shiny it was, how well-lit it was, and it just made the entire experience, I think, much more enjoyable, so hats off to the folks that are taking care of that space down there because they're doing a really good job.
Excellent, thank you for that. Any other committee members? Anything in that?
People, let me, Craig, go first?
All right, X, sounds great.
Thank you, I have actually two announcements. First, on Wednesday, February 14th, at the State House, we're going to participate in a legislative briefing entitled "M Council Isn't the Only Option." This briefing is co-sponsored by Representative Murray and Senator Roche. Principal Lopez, Dan Cody, and Alyssa Holland will be providing some testimony on what they do with performance assessments in our school quality measures dashboard through MCIA at this briefing, so should be a good event. The second is this. This is from Meg from Tim Toward and, well, actually not Tim, Tim was a teacher of the building trades, so the students, they made about 30 of these free libraries. They custom painted them, and they custom painted them to elementary teachers' or elementary classrooms' wishes, so the classrooms said this is how we wanted them painted, and they built them, painted them, this second, this is what we got. This one here is actually going to the Best Western, so they did a really nice job, so I just wanted to bring it and show you some of the work they're doing.
Excellent, thank you for that.
We'll watch out for them.
All right, Dr. McIntyre?
Yeah, so today I sent two emails to the community that I never relish sending. We had, one of our students walking to school was struck by a car right in front of Brookside, and one thing, a follow-up that I'm going to do next week is just, I'm seeing, I think, people rushing in the morning and the afternoon a little too much, going to the school and leaving the school, and fortunately, our student's going to make a full recovery, but I'm just going to send a couple reminders out over the next few months, just to, you know, take it slow because our most valuable resources, resources are walking all over the place in the morning, you know, from our preschool students all the way through our high school students that was, you know, unfortunately hit by a vehicle today. So just, just a reminder, I'm going to send a few reminders out. You know, it's just something that I think people just need to take a little more time because we do have students, and I think all of our arrival and dismissal procedures are well articulated, but I think people just are so focused on, you know, getting to the school, getting there early, getting there on time, and sometimes if you just take a couple moments or leave a few minutes early, it can make all the difference. So that's what I have for you tonight.
Excellent, thank you very much. So moving on then to invitation to speak. Not seeing anybody here for invitation to speak, so we will move right on to our Milford TV Board member appointment, so Jonathan, can you come up and join us here? I'll have you introduce yourself to the board.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jonathan Capisi. I'm familiar, I believe, to most, if not all of you in the room. Former student of the Milford Public School District, as well as an employee in the IT Department for about two years. Recently been working as the Director of Music over at St. Mary's Church here in Milford, doing a lot of work with Milford TV in that respect for live streaming our programs, and also worked full-time as an Airport Technology Specialist down for Breeze Airways in Providence, so I'm very happy to be here.
So I had, you know, a handful of people that were kind of inquired about the position, asking questions and all that. Jonathan was the one that didn't have any questions, that just sent over the bio, so I know his eagerness to be a part of the board. You know, certainly, his bio was included. I hope everybody got a chance to read. There's no need to go through that part of it, so I think his eagerness to be a part of the board and represent our board for Milford TV is going to be a very good choice. So, any other questions for Jonathan? Go ahead.
Not a question, just a comment. I've known Jonathan for a number of years now, when he worked for the town, or the schools, or both. I think he'd be an outstanding representative for the Milford TV, so I applaud you for coming forward.
If I could just jump in, too.
Please.
I'm thrilled Jonathan's moving forward. I've known Jonathan for a long time, and when Chris shared with me that Jonathan had put his name forward, I was super excited, and I think he's the right person for the role, so thank you for stepping forward.
Absolutely, thank you.
Matt, I'll just make the motion if everybody's ready. I'm happy that we have somebody that's excited and wants to be involved and is willing to get there and contribute, so thank you for that. I'll move to appoint Jonathan to the Milford TV Board.
Excellent, so motion, second by Michael, and then all in favor, and that is unanimous, so congratulations. Welcome, I'll get this side of the board if anybody, anything more to say. Go ahead, Megan.
Yeah, I'll just commend you. It sounds like your plate is already quite full, Jonathan, so it's fabulous to have you even considering taking on more for our community, so thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, just thank you for being involved. Like, everyone was saying it's important that we have people involved who want to be involved, and so I appreciate the letter he wrote and coming to the meeting and being a part of the process.
Absolutely, happy to be here.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we work together on the Youth Commission Board, so, you know, I know you're going to do a great job. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. We'll get you in touch with Milford TV and go from there, so, again, great, thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you as well, Jonathan.
See you, Jonathan.
Good to see you all.
All right, moving on to the 2024-2025 school calendar.
Do you want me to jump in on this one?
Jump in, yeah, I guess, yeah.
I don't physically have it in front of me, but I'm going to wing it a little bit.
You want this one?
Yeah, thank you. So this, the calendar goes through a number of reviews. We sent it to our principals, we sent it to the Milford Teachers Association, and everybody signed off on it to this point. Our Central Office team has reviewed it as well. It's pretty standard, pretty standard calendar, so I would just encourage the board to just take a look at it, and then we can answer any questions you have, and hopefully move to a vote.
Go ahead, Robin.
It looks like our meetings are not on. Only one date was, but the other meetings were not.
Yeah, yeah, I did notice that, too. So it definitely is a good outline, yeah, that the, if you look in, you have the lower left-hand corner, it says, I believe, our names are bold and italicized, so I think that is a revision that needs to be added on to this. But still, the good thing is it's only February, so we can get to that. The other thing that I was wondering on, based on this past year, we had that first Saturday, and then we didn't get a chance to go through, so should we, as a board, try to schedule a couple things within that January timeframe, so that way, you know, not everybody's scrambling and it's, put a little ease on the next chair and Melissa to try to schedule up a time where everybody's going to be available, so that would be my other thing to suggest to add to this calendar, is again, a second budget meeting in January as a group, so it's listed on the calendar.
Sorry, interrupt that. This past year for the calendar, the current school year, we voted to take them off, we voted to take the school committee dates off, and we posted them on the website. The reason for that was because they were, they often moved, and then they were already asked on this, and then we couldn't go back and revise it.
Okay.
I mean, actually, I support that. I think that's probably a good idea, and I think once the new website rolls out, too, it's easy enough to put ours on the website and the website calendar, and then it, shifting it additionally is not a problem.
Which I agree with, so I would just say that we just strike off the school committee meetings on the calendar, on the bottom.
The bottom ones.
Yep.
Student and parent-driven calendar. Exactly, yeah.
Well, then just, yeah, I think it might have been on this print, but November 7th looks like it was a school committee meeting, so we would just want to do that. I just have one question outside of the school committee meetings. The half-day in March, I just didn't know the rationale for that.
Do you want to ask someone, Greg?
I guess traditionally, we've always had a half-day in March, yeah.
That's professional, is it professional development or?
Professional development, yeah. But it's always been, we've always had six. Actually, no, we've always had five last year, or it wasn't last year, it was like eight, two, three years ago. We added one in September. You'll see that the one in September, we've actually moved to October to coincide with Columbus Day. Traditionally, September has always been very clunky for us with Rashid Shahn and Yon Kapoor. The other thing with the 11 is Yon Kapoor is actually on the 12th, but I believe it starts after sundown on the 11, so we figured the half-day on the 11 made more sense to go there. Makes October a little clunky, but...
Megan?
I'm going to assume there's no way to, I mean, obviously, you can change with snow days, but last day of school is a half-day Monday, that feels...
I think we always have at least one or two. I mean, so far, we're doing okay so far this year, but usually have a couple of snow days, so it's unlikely to end on a Monday. Possible, but unlikely.
Is it pretty, I mean, this is, I know I probably get any teachers mad at me for even bringing this up, but is it common when the Christmas is on a Wednesday?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we debated that a little bit, and we said we've always kind of described it like, and mostly, I don't want to say every district's doing it that way, but most districts are doing it that way.
As far as, like, having Monday and Tuesday.
Or, well, Tuesday, I understand because it's Christmas Eve, but I was just questioning the 23rd, yeah.
I think we lose a lot of people not doing it fully.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's something we definitely discussed.
So, yeah, so the idea will be, yeah, remove the school committee meetings off this and that notation down in the lower left-hand corner. There was, yeah, the November 7th, it shows that it's indicated that there is a school committee meeting there, but we'll just remove that. Any other revisions or questions there? Just not seeing any. Yeah, and then, as we're talking about it, do we have not looked ahead at our school committee calendar, or have we, I'm trying to remember now?
We haven't for next year, yet.
Okay, so that's, well, I'll put that up on a future agenda, and again, then I'll bring up the issue with scheduling more in January. Yeah?
Yeah, to that point, I'd like, I'd like to, you know, talk about that calendar in advance. You know, some boards just set their calendar, you know, a few weeks in advance, but I'd like to get a somewhat set calendar, which last year, we went back to the traditional first and third, Thursdays, when it didn't conflict with other, you know, vacation weeks or holidays, so if we can, you know, put that on as a future agenda, I think that would be beneficial for me anyways, because there are some Thursdays where I have other commitments, and notably on the 4th, so, not that I can't, you know, come here instead of those, but it would be beneficial for me anyways.
Exactly. All right, excellent. So, any other questions or comments? So looking for a motion to accept the 2024-2025 school calendar as presented, with a few little edits to it. So motion by Megan, second by Matt, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Excellent.
Thank you.
All right. Next agenda item is a discussion on a spending policy. I'm going to turn it right over to John, kind of discuss this at a high level.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. So I actually hope to have some more thoughts in writing for everybody to review tonight, but the week just got away from me, and I didn't have the opportunity, but I think everybody here, I think everybody was here last year in May or so, when we brought this as an agenda item, and I put some thoughts out there for developing a spending policy. And what I mean by that is, this committee is responsible for all the spending in the district, but there's a number of hires. I mean, we do the contracts for all the various unions, we approve the contracts for a number of high-level administrators, but there's a large number of people that are either at-will employees or are working on a contract that don't necessarily have to be on a contract. And I think we want to review all of these positions. I know I do. I hope that, you know, you guys will agree, we should be looking at this spending, and this year is a good example, when we look at our budget forecast and our expected aid, where we probably need to look at this annually instead of developing a policy, which I mentioned previously, we could set a certain percentage that would be acceptable, but I don't think we should govern that by policy. But, so some of the issues that I see, and, you know, this is not for any kind of a decision tonight, but something I hope if there's, you know, enough interest in this, I can bring back some, maybe a suggested policy or a list of, do we want this or this, or this or that? But first, I've said this a number of times, I think we have too many contracts when we could have more employees at-will, and I base that on my own experience in both here and in town government, and in conversations with our Labor Council, and I know most, if not everybody here, has been a part of that. You know, some of these contracts are certainly necessary, especially some of the higher levels. Some of them are a liability, and I think we've experienced that with some of the employee turnovers that we've had in recent years, and that kind of exposes the liability. We have some employees at-will now. I think there should be more, not fewer. I think for everybody that's not under a contract, and this parallels what we do on the town government side, I think we need a wage and administration plan that explains each position, identifies each position, gives them a range of salaries, whether it's the people in central office that aren't under a contract, or the people in maintenance, or the community use members. I think we need to, I think we need to look at these, come up with a salary range, you know, when you start, you're at step one, at least this is the terminology we use on the town side, it's very close to the teacher contract and the other contracts, but, you know, you start at step one, you know, you might have five steps each year, you know you're going up, you're getting a, you know, somewhat of a raise, you know that there's room for growth, and, I mean, the dollar amounts don't matter at this point, it's the concept. And then, of course, most years, you'll go up a step, and then they're sure, or maybe a cost of living that goes with that, so it's, you might go up two and a half percent, and then you get two percent for cost of living, so you go up four percent. At least, you know your expectation's coming in, you're not just getting hired saying, okay, I make X number of dollars, and, okay, now what? I'm great, I love this, I'm glad to get this job. Oh, now what? Is this this forever? There's just no, there's no clarity on what you might get. We also, to the best of my knowledge, don't have anything that tells people or employees how many vacation days they get, how many, how many, or if they get bereavement, personal days, sick days, it's just not quantified, and I think we need to do that for the employees. I know it's been following sort of a, it's just been mirroring some of the other contract positions, but there's been nothing formalized. I think we owe that to the people, I think, you know, the employees, they need to know what they're signing up for. So I guess the goal in all this, and that's, I know that's a lot, but we want to define which non-union positions that get a contract, we want to consider a provision that everybody else is sort of at-will, but because we have the authority to do this, if we have an employee that warrants a contract but isn't entitled to one by statute, we can certainly grant them one, but we don't have to, and that could be an, that can be a case-by-case situation. We have a new hire recently, I don't want to use names or titles, but that could, for example, be in our classification, but because the person may have been here for a long time and has already, you know, shown his abilities and everything else, it might just justify a contract. And the other thing with the contract, there's so many variables that we have now, I think we want to consider whether the school committee wants to approve each contract. You know, we have, we've talked about the issues where, well, to me, it's an issue, it might not be to everybody, but we have administrators that are in their contract, they get reimbursed for their education courses, and we've talked about, in some of those cases, there's no provision for a clawback, if you will. If they leave the day they get their doctorate, we gave them, we gave them a gift. That's fine, we might want to do that for somebody, but we might want to consider other options, such as if you leave after a year, you know, you have to reimburse us for some of your, the money we just expended for your education and your professional development. So I know most of these thoughts I've put out there before, I honestly, you know, I did hope to have something a little bit more formalized and outlined in writing, but I just didn't get to there, and if, you know, if anybody or everybody else has interest in this, I'll make it a priority to bring something back at the next meeting. Um, I'll, I'll make it a priority to bring something back at the next meeting. Yes?
Uh, I'll just say that I, I completely support all of those, uh, those comments, John, I think that it's, it's certainly a little bit of a disservice to those non-contracted employees to not have a handbook or a policy or something like the rest of us do that states things like time off and bereavement and all that stuff, so I think outlining that is a big deal and something that we have to get done, and I, I also like the idea of going through and just finally labeling which roles should be contracted, maybe contracted, which ones aren't, just that it's just all the gray areas gone, and we have something to run on going forward, so I support all of it, I think we should do it.
Questions, comments for John?
Yeah, I support it also, John, I don't know that spending policy is how I would sort of capture it. Um, it also reminds me of this new initiative we had around HR that unfortunately I don't think is gonna move forward, cause I feel like that.
I do wanna point in my notes, I said, could have a better label. But, but we used that last time, so I stuck with it.
And, but I think as part of it, it would be really helpful to get a matrix or something that quantifies Kevin, kind of where we are today, so that we're all on the same page in terms of how many folks and what roles fall in which bucket now as we start to think about moving it forward, but I would definitely support furthering the discussion.
Any other questions or comments for John?
So you want me to put that as a future agenda item, just preview?
Yeah, and I've got it on mine, too, so, but yeah, certainly you can, uh, note, note that. We'll, we'll keep building on it, we'll, I'll, I'll be in touch with John as far as if he's prepared for, uh, an outline, just to make sure that it gets, it gets into your hands, you know, a few days prior to a meeting.
So is it safe to say without doing a formal vote, that you support me drafting something that we can then start working on, like it's similar to what Michael did on community use?
Yeah, I think we need something to react to, so if you can do some draft, that'd be great, to make the point, I, I think it's more of a, it's gonna be a couple of policies. I've looked at other di- districts and, yeah, it's gonna be a good, a big, but good lift.
And I think it will be broken down into mo- maybe multiple components, too.
I think it will be, I think the, you know, if we call it the, similar to the town hall, the wage and administration, that, that parses out one group. You know, one, one aspect to, versus the other aspect of contracts. Not that they can't cross over, cause somebody might be able to go from, you know, one classification to get in a contract, but.
I was just gonna say thank you in advance for taking the later on this, um, it does, just even listening to what we were talking about tonight. I think it's gonna be very multi-layered, right, I think there's gonna be a lot of different parts and components to it, so I think, you know, it'll be really great to see what you come up with, and then um, I think we should be ready, too, for the discussion might go different ways that we're not even anticipating. Um, just cause thinking about, I think there's certain pieces of this that you talked about, but then there's other pieces that, for me, were really salient, when you talked about the education piece, right, and then what other parts of, say, you know, an assistant principal's contract that is unionized and standard, looks different for other people, I, I just really think there's a lot of pieces to look at, so, thank you for starting the process.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, excellent, thank you, John, for that. So, our next agenda item is a request for international travel to China in the summer of twenty twenty-four.
All right, I've got the details on that, yeah. Uh, three teachers and sixteen, eighteen students will travel to Shandong in China, a province of China. For three weeks in July for a special program with the Summer China Culture Exchange Program. This will be the second time that MHS faculty and students have participated in this program, with our first group traveling in two thousand nineteen. While in Shandong, our teachers and students will stay with local families and will lead activities for Chinese students in an immersive English language summer camp program. At the end of the program, the group will enjoy three to five days of sightseeing. All expenses are paid by the SSCP, which is the acronym for the program. Except for approximately three to five hundred dollars to cover local transit and lodging during the sightseeing portion at the end of the trip. Uh, Catherine Neville, Jill DiAntonio, and Kaylee Bauer are participating faculty members from the high school. Students are presently undergoing interviews for selection. And we, we, this was part of kind of our exchange program prior to COVID. Um, it was one of, I think, two different exchanges we were doing with China, and there's an interest to kind of reengage this, this coming summer.
Any questions or comments on that request? Not seeing any, so again, because it's international travel, or travel out of the state, it does require a school committee vote. So, looking for a motion to approve the, uh, travel to, uh, the international travel to China for the summer of twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Michael, second by Brendan, and then all in favor, and that is unanimous. All right, next agenda item is a discussion on the warrant articles for our upcoming Springtown meeting.
Oh, I have, um, well, I was.
I was gonna say, we'll start with the first one, that's easy, and then we'll get into the discussion, so I apologize.
So I'll take the easy one.
Yeah.
So this is a housekeeping article that we have to do every year, it's relative to vending machines at the high school. Uh, it is required by law that we move the monthly commission check to the town general fund. We keep a s- uh, separate tally, and come town meeting, we have to ask for the funds back. To which Josh puts together a little plan for other teachers who apply for small mini-grants to utilize the funds, and the request is in the amount of four thousand ten dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Any questions on that? Not seeing any, so looking for a motion to, to add this to the, uh, the twenty twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four annual town meeting warrant. So, motion by Brendan, second by Robin, all in favor, and that is unanimous, excellent. That's the, that was the only one that is the, for business related, yeah, okay, excellent. So also the other one, uh, wanna get the discussion going, um, now that we're, you know, we're in the, uh, the statement of interest has been accepted, so. There are a few items that we can start looking at, even though our, our, the timer doesn't start until, uh, August first, so, I guess I'll.
Yeah, the, the, the big one is the feasibility study.
Yep.
Um, and you, I gave you, this is the language that's required by the MSBA, just give everybody a copy. Very similar when we were doing the SOI statements, there's this required language, has to be read on town meeting floor and voted. Um, I think there's some, there's some discussion, or this is what we're gonna talk about tonight, about, although the timeline doesn't start until, I think it's August first or fifth. Um, doing the vote at the, the, the May town meeting, just to kind of get ahead of the game, particularly when the, uh, funds have been set aside for a pretty significant period of time by, by the community. Um, I confirmed with our, uh, contact at MSBA that we can take a vote prior to the eligibility period occurring. So, um, we could do the vote at, uh, the May meeting if that was something that the school committee was, was interested, we gotta move.
Good, yes.
I definitely supported, Kevin, how much are we asking for?
So that's.
Would we ask for?
So that's one thing we're gonna try to get, that's the next phase of this, is to try to put out a number that's reasonable, that gives us, um, you know, every project's a little different.
Sure.
But based on like the size and potential scope of the project of a high school, I'm gonna re- reconnect with, um, Nina, and I know you reached out to Matt.
I was just gonna say, I, I think I shared, did I share with you? The feasibility, okay, I'll, I'll send it to you, too, if I didn't copy, but, um, Nina at the MSBA did send the location to find it, and I could not make sense of it, so I hope it's somebody else.
I'm gonna try to get explicit, like, numbers of the last, like, you know, projects within the last two, two to three years, just to get a sense of like a range.
Got it, so are we just talking about this tonight, Chris, versus voting on it, cause we don't know how much we'd be voting on?
So, my, my thought was it'll, it can still be edited, so, to still vote for it, to push forward on it. So if that is the, you know, the, the pleasure of the board to move it there, but again, yeah, even though it's, it's a, the framework is, is, is just that, it's a very basic outline, yeah, we can go through, but I wanted to make sure that we were comfortable as a group starting the process, even though, uh, it's, you know, it's not August first yet, so, yeah, John?
Uh, I just wanna say, we, we definitely don't wanna put a number on it tonight, we don't, you know, we can push, we can vote to push the warrant article forward, but, you know, we have time right up until town meeting to, to finalize the number. The other thing, um, we don't wanna come up short on the number, because we're gonna spend whatever the bid comes in at, we're not gonna spend whatever the appropriation is. And I wanna keep in mind that we really have almost another year to do this, so by the time we actually get to the bid time, we're like two, two and a half years from now, so if we're using numbers from a year ago, they're gonna be.
Two years from the feasibility study, huh?
Right, because we're, we're, we're two hundred and seventy days from.
Almost a full year.
Two hundred and seventy days from, from August.
Got it, okay.
And then, you know, then we can go out to bid, and so, you know, e- even a year and a half, when, if we're using numbers that are a year and a half old, I don't wanna come up short, and then, and then the whole process goes sideways.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, so, um, student research, talked to Jerry multiple times, so, wh- when we did Woodland, um, there was no number in the warrant article, so, um, we can ask Jerry, I did today, and he said, yeah, there's usually not a number, cause the, it changes. Um, but I do think we should have a range, you know, have to make sure, um, but yeah, so Woodland didn't have a, any number in, so. Um, we, we might not need to put one, but Jerry said today, he's more than happy, excited to write these articles for us, so he'll let us know what we need to do.
Good, excellent, and I think, yeah, one thing, Megan, this was the one time I really did reach out to, uh, the, the finance committee and the, uh, town treasurer, and just to, town finance director, just to get a little bit of idea from them, like, are they comfortable?
Sure.
And both gave the, the big nod of approval that the, the funds have been set aside, they're anticipating it, so they gave us the green light to go ahead, which is great, too.
Perfect, thanks.
So, yeah, and I also wanted to mention, you know, Michael's been, he's been calling me a lot and sending me a lot of information, um, in regards to this, so I think his eagerness to, uh, to be a part of this, just wanna, you know, give you, uh, some props on that, and, and to go ahead, cause, you know, as I was looking ahead to do this, you know, uh, Mike had shown that eagerness right from the start of the SOI, so I was able to reach out to him, so that's why he kinda reached out to Jerry, uh, and took that, uh, initiative, so.
Jerry's really excited about this, by the way, um, yeah, so it's, it was a pretty funny conversation I've had with him. Should we, should we roll to this second piece, or?
Uh, let's do, is, I guess, is the second piece, would you consider part of the first, or not?
The warrant's gonna have to come, come back to us to vote on, so, so, I don't know if we have to vote on it tonight.
As far, well, I'd like to vote to at least, or, like you said, entstand a motion to at least move the, uh, this motion onto the warrant article, right?
Fine, sure.
Yes.
He's for it for the warrant article.
Okay. Yeah, we should do it separately. Yeah, motion by Matt, second by Michael, then all in favor to again, to move this ahead, uh, anymore, actually, any more discussion? Sorry on that, and then, uh, vote to approve, so that is unanimous, Michael, she's on it, so. So the second component, uh, I'll, I'll turn it over to Michael, he can explain that aspect of it, and you can go from there.
Um, so, as Chris said, Matt and I have talked a lot, um, I feel very strongly that we should have these two warrant articles on the May um, town meeting, um, I think it'll send a message to the MSBA, then on, when on August first, we get a, you know, we start the program. We can go to them and say, oh, by the way, you know, here's, you know, document number one, which is the, they, they have to approve the school building committee. Uh, and then we say, oh, and we also have, you know, the funds allocated, ready for the feasibility study, which a lot of towns are slow on, they don't wait, they wait until they're accepted. Then they go through the process, then they get pushed back in line, cause they don't have the funds available, we do, so I, you know, the idea is day one, let's hit the ground running to make sure we stay in the front of the queue. Um, the second piece, um, and I guess we couldn't pass you, you have the. Um, here, um, is, um, the school building committee, um, and that's gonna pass around, is, um, pretty much dictated by law on who we have to pick, right, and so, again, going back and forth with Jerry and how Woodland was done, and our process and learning about all this. Um, I think that the second piece to, for the articles in May, is we need to have this ready as well, too, to say who is the school building committee, cause that group has to start to, you know, spend the money and, and be the representative of the town to do the feasibility study, so Jerry's advice today was, he'll just write one, one warrant article to cover this, to move forward. Um, so there's two pieces of paper, um, one is the actual form letter that Kevin showed a few meetings ago. Um, from the state that we have to submit to say who the school building committee is, and then the second one is just, um, again, just it's a draft for discussion for us, I did what I thought would be a good makeup
Thank you.
of the school building committee, which would go into the warrant article. So just go through it real quick, I did it in order of this sheet. Um, so the first line is, you know, it talks about the SBC has to have somebody who's MCPPO certified. Which I've talked to Kathy about, um, our town administrator, I think, is, um, so, and I think you are as well, too. So, whoever would replace Kathy could be, um, so that, um, member, you'll see on the second page. I think the school committee would appoint that person, right, and then I, I just go down the list, I, I don't need to go through everything, but basically, we, we have to have a, a member of the select board. They would appoint that person, obviously, town administrator would be involved. I think it'd be nice to have three school committee members on, on the committee. Superintendent has to be included, member of the planning board has to be included, all the asterisks, by the way, are just mandated by law. Um, NA put, so, um, NA is representative office to authorize by law to construct school building, that doesn't apply to our, to us. I, that was a Jerry thing, he's like, doesn't apply to us, cause we're not a city. Um, the principal, the assistant, well, typically, the last time, it was the, uh, assistant superintendent of curriculum. I'm pretty sure it was, right, Craig?
I was, but I don't think I was, I was transitioning on when Bob was leaving.
So yeah, so, since Craig is the curriculum guy, you know, it'll, it, it says here, uh, it'll, it'll go in here. Member knowledgeable in education mission and function of facility, so since the superintendent's already on there, that seemed to make sense, that it would be the assistant superintendent of curriculum. Um, local budget official or FinCom, basically a member of, of the FinCom, which we do it. Um, and then, member of the community with architecture, engineering, or construction experience, which I think the school committee should appoint. Um, and then other, so, um, that's already at thirteen people, right, so, that's, I thought, a good number. Woodland was at thirteen people, um, and so, and there's actually a few other positions that are mandated now that weren't mandated back then. Um, so anyways, so, that was just some of the research that was gone into this. Um, but I would like this to be on the warrant art, well, if the feasibility stays gonna be on the warrant article, this has to be on it as well, too. Cause this group is the one who's gonna be moving forward to spend the money. Um, another piece, the school building committee is, um, in charge, is the representative of the town to go run the whole thing, signs the checks, authorizes everything, so all the money runs through the school building committee, and that's the, really, really the big purpose. If anybody else wants to give a overview of what the school building committee does, that'd be great.
Are they pretty? Well, go ahead, Craig.
I mean, yeah, they're, they're part of the whole design process, though.
Yep.
Right, aside from just writing checks, if I remember, we had a full building committee, but then there was also a subcommittee. Um, that was authorized to approve all kinds of change, like, uh, change orders, so that we didn't have to get held up and wait for, um, full building committee meetings. Um, the other, the other thing I noticed here is there was, there was also a member of the Woodland faculty. Which I think is an important role, I think you should have at least one teacher on this committee, um, for, to give feedback, and be a part of it.
Um, that's great, uh, so then, if we do that, then we go to fourteen.
I thought, see, I, I, I have to check my records, I thought that, that Woodland one was up closer to eighteen, but I might be off, I might be misremembering. But I, I def, I have a list of folks in my office.
Okay, yeah, you know, I, I thought about the teacher, again, I was trying to keep the, the, the group smaller. Um, one thought was, why can't we, again, subcommittee, get, get, get information from teachers, instead of just having one. Right, so instead of having one teacher as the voice, having, you know, the group actually go and query the whole body, I don't, just a thought.
If we go along that route, and I know this is kind of like further down, of thinking about having, like, teachers be part of it in a subcommittee, I wonder if there would be any um, merit in trying to get some teachers from Stacy, because we're talking about eighth grade, too, being part of this, that I think that, that they should have a voice in it as well. So, just a thought, if we're gonna do that.
So I, I think, um, the, the building committee, as far as, again, is, is fiduciary responsible for the whole project, right, runs a project. And then there's the education plan, which I can't speak to, but Craig told me that, that that's what these guys do, so, that might tie into what you're talking about, not the, 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 the building committee's not gonna decide the educational piece. Uh, it's more of the building, it represents the town building, it's, you know, a town building, right, so, I think it's, it's, it's separate, is that correct?
Yeah, and so, when it came time for like, um, classroom design, furniture, um, things like that, um, we definitely be, I remember sitting in with every teacher, just about in just small groups. Uh, including fifth grade teachers, uh, so there are ways to, to get their insight, sure.
But there's, there's something to be said about having the teacher voice on the, on the committee, cause I think, like, just serving on it with, with a teacher on the committee, it was there was, there was some value there.
Yeah, I, I'm arguing, I totally make sure it's not just that one person's opinion, and, you know, there's.
No, 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 we, we get, we get feedback, when, like, like Craig was saying, that, that, like, on the furniture, some design stuff, coloring.
Every, yeah.
Yeah, almost everything.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess, Michael, thank you for doing all this, this is fantastic, would you also consider maybe adding the athletic director to this, just because? Yeah, I guess, Michael, thank you for doing all this, this is fantastic, would you also consider maybe adding the athletic director to this, just because there is a larger athletic portion to this property compared to other schools, and it is a larger portion of the high school project.
I serve the pleasure of the board, so it's really the discussion of everybody, so i- if that makes sense, I don't know if that makes sense, Craig might have to.
The only feedback after that is, the meetings are often at night, which is often when sporting events are, so I, I foresee a lot of conflicts.
Not only that, but if I remember correctly, when it came time to talk just about maybe the athletic piece, they could be invited in, they're just not a, a voting member. So they're coming as an advisory, when needed.
Okay.
Yeah, the only other thing I was gonna add, and I think, I don't know if you and I discussed this at one point, but the field, for example, outside Woodland, was not part of any refundable money from the MSBA.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Building, yes, but outside of that, I'm sure outside of what floors on the gym, it's probably not really athletics related.
Sure.
But, as Kathy said, we did hear that, that anyone can come, if it is an open meeting, and they could obviously be invited to share opinions, but they just wouldn't be invited.
And I guess to that point, Matt, the specs for a high school is very different than the specs for, like, an elementary school. So elementary school, they told us right from the start, there are, are no, I forget how they called it now, no slope floors, in other words, you can't put an auditorium in an elementary school, but at a high school, that's something that you could do.
Is that something, I know.
Well, that's, that was back then, so I don't know.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
I believe the auditorium is included, the, for, for a high school project, a pool is not.
Right, okay, okay, yeah, and that's, and that's good to know, too, there's, there's different aspects.
Yeah.
So are we saying we should include the athletic director, or not?
I don't know, I don't think, as a voting member, no.
It makes sense to me.
But obviously, their input is definitely valuable. You, you okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, fine with it, okay, John?
I was just gonna add, just to kinda review their, their role, they pretty much, they take this from start to finish, once this, once this committee is formed, they'll be the ones putting out the invitation to bid for a feasibility study, they'll be the ones selecting, affirming to do the feasibility study, they'll be the ones, then looking for, they'll be putting out the bid for the design team, the architects, they'll be selecting the architects, they'll be, they'll be pretty much making the decision on whether, just in the abstract, it's a new school, or an addition, or renovation, so they're, they're, and of course, to Mike's point, fiscal, you know, they have the fiscal responsibility as well, so they kinda run this, this whole project.
And they do report back to the school committee periodically, they're, so they're, they're giving updates, and I think it was a combination of folks from the committee and the superintendent providing updates, or the school committee members were sort of.
So do we wanna have thirteen, fourteen, or fifteen members?
Well, I guess, from a clarity, this will be a separate warrant?
No, no.
Or it'll, it'll go in with the?
Jerry said that he'll just write it as one.
As one, okay.
Yeah, because, yeah, he basically said to me today, don't think about it, just, what do you want to do, and tell him, and then he'll just go right.
Well, the.
He was very, so he literally said that, he said, just, just tell me, you know, what you want to compromise, and the feasibility, and he'll just, we're to smith it.
And then the other part, this is just, do the positions have to be filled by the, by the time we get to town meeting, or this just defines those thirteen to fifteen individuals?
So that the process would be, so beforehand, we can do, like, interim, so like, we could pick, like, the three school committee members now to just start, which I think we should. And then each board could, could, could do that, but it doesn't become official until the town votes on it, and then it goes to the MSBCA to, to get approval.
Their approval, yeah.
Right, so it's still gotta go through some steps before it's an official bodies, okay.
Yeah, I think it could be either way, I think, in concert, would you, the town meeting has to approve the formation of a school building committee, because then it's up to the select board to choose their members, it's up to the planning board to choose theirs.
Correct, yeah, I just wasn't sure if that had to be done before the.
I had wondered that, too, in advance, I didn't get a clear answer, but after more I read about it, that's what, I know I shouldn't use intuition, but that's what intuitively made sense to me, that we're forming, we're approving the formation of a committee, not the membership of the committee.
Correct, yeah, okay, but we can certainly, you know, once we move forward in, with the warrant article, we can go to the select board, saying, hey, here's what we're putting forward,
can you take your members, sooner than later, right, so.
Just, just to back up what John said, actually, just reminded me, there's a note, a lot of this, so, the committee can shift in members at any time, and we have to notify the MSBA in writing, so obviously, we don't need a town meeting to adjust the members.
Right.
But we do obviously have, so I think that that kinda backs up what John's saying in terms of.
Yeah, and that happened, I mean, Patrick was a longtime member from the school committee, and then his term expired, and I think it was Jen that took over for him, so you're gonna have that, that turnover.
Absolutely.
Especially through such a long process.
Right, exactly.
And Woodland, what was the warrant on Woodland, Kathy, two thousand and six or so?
I have it right here.
And it, in the committee.
Yes, it was right around there.
The school, school opened in twenty sixteen, but the committee was still doing work for a couple more years, so it's a, you know, that's, that's over ten years for, for Woodland, for that committee's work.
Any other wish?
I was just gonna say, if we need a number, I would just say, put no more than fifteen, and just to have something out there, but if we don't need to define it, then I would make a motion to move forward with creating a building committee in May.
We do need to define the, not the.
We do.
The, the members, we need to say three school committee.
Got it.
And then, everything else is mandated by law.
Got it.
Uh, but that'll, and then if we do others, which is like a, a, a school teacher, then we're now at fourteen.
Got it, thanks.
But we do need to find that.
That's helpful.
Can we, can we adjust it to up to three school committee members, because we don't know that, going forward, for ten years, that there'll be three that won't, want to actively participate.
One of the things that was challenging, particularly after the project was completed, is to get a quorum. So, so I just, like, it's important, like, it's a, it's a big time commitment, too, and we have one member on the, with the Woodlands, I'm not saying we don't have three members, but.
Well, we have eleven, we have eleven by law, if we do up to three school committee members.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, just in terms of, like, the commitment and the, you know, just the, what do you think about what a quorum is?
Yeah.
And the, the committee doesn't end that completion of the project, but there's a two-year period post that.
Well, it could, depending on the project, it could be longer, it could be longer.
It could be, right.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll add, it's funny, I actually originally had fifteen, and I had, the union would elect somebody to be a teacher rep, so I'll put that back in. And then the fifteenth, I'm not sure, well, any ideas? We can say up to fifteen.
Town finance committee member?
It, it's in there.
It's in there.
That one's by law, right.
Any public safety consideration?
Appointee or something?
Right, maybe, yeah, maybe someone from public safety.
Yeah.
Well, the fire, doesn't the fire chief have to be involved? Does it make sense to, I mean, I don't know, it, it makes sense to me, but.
So I'm, I'm thinking of the people that were on there, you had Lena McCarthy, you had Jonathan Bruce, you had Aldo Chiki, you had Eric Daldren, um, Di Gregorio.
So it was.
I'm not sure how the, all these people fit into these categories.
That's what I was wondering, too.
Yeah, it was fifteen members.
They were a bunch of appointees, like the school.
I think Aldo was, was FinCom, and Jonathan was the, like, the.
Board selectman or something.
No, he was probably the member with construction experience.
Construction experience, exactly, yeah.
And Rick Valani was on it, too, is the, he also had the ability, what's the?
So, yeah, I think, we can do a vote, or just consensus, to have Jerry move forward to write the draft, and then we can circulate it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I don't get with either.
This is exciting, everybody. So absolutely, like, this is really exciting, and it's really important, so.
Find, like, actual steps forward.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'll, let's do a formal vote with it, so, and stand a motion to, you know, move forward with a fifteen, up to fifteen member school, what was it, uh, so, school building committee, yeah, so, motion by Matt, and then seconded by Michael, then all in favor, and that is unanimous. And that, and that just, this will give Jerry the ability to start writing that for the town meeting warrant, so.
And then just one more piece, if you don't mind, Principal Josh Allen at the high school is already kind of organizing committees for the execution of plan or profile, so that's like, that work is beginning as well, so.
Awesome, great.
So, and that includes the chapter seventy-four programs we're potentially looking at, so, there's, I think, administrators, central office, teachers, curriculum team leaders, and I'm probably leaving out one group, but we're starting to get that ball rolling.
Excellent. Very good, moving on then, to, from our report, from our superintendent of schools.
All right, these are two very quick updates, and this is, I shared, but I figured I'd just, I'd talk about it in, at the school committee meeting. After going through an extensive search process, and interview process, excuse me, we selected Tim Kirin, the current principal of Woodland Elementary School, to be the director of technology, grants and communication. Tim will be replacing Nancy Angelini, who is retiring this summer, Tim will be working with Nancy and the team to develop a transition plan. And as everyone in the room knows Nancy, she's done an exceptional job documenting all the key responsibilities and timelines. There was eleven overall applicants and three finalists, just to give you a sense of the process, and we had good participation from, from, from our technology team, as well as our administrative team on the committee.
Any questions on that subject? I'm not seeing any.
All right, the Woodland school principal search update, and this is just a quick update of where we are, we are now searching for a new Woodland Elementary School principal. We have posted the position on school spring, and it will close on February twenty-fifth, which is the Sunday, the second Sunday in February vacation. We'll have a pre-screening committee, interview committees, and either post-finalist forums, or meet and greets. I hope to have participation from Woodland staff, our administrative team, the school committee, parents, and community stakeholders. I should have a tentative schedule and sign-up emails out next week, the hope is to complete the process by the end of March. I do expect a great deal of interest in this position, and the last time we, we ran this, which was, I think, eight years ago, we had three sitting principals as finalists, so, again, I'm anticipating, like, a fair amount of interest for this position, because it's, I think there's a lot of very positive things about Woodland in terms, from a candidate's perspective.
Any questions on that? I'm not seeing any, great, thank you for that update.
That's all I have.
Very good, moving on then, for, for our report by our assistant superintendent for curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it should be brief update, spoiler alert, attendance does matter. This, we worked with our partners at Open Architects, I believe, John was the one that requested us to get this information. I have for you the math analysis, ELA analysis for Milford High School, Stacy Middle School, and Woodland. So what this graph shows you, this is just our math, MCAS, and it's corresponding to student attendance, so, this graph shows you that kids that scored in the exceeding, which is the far left column, missed on average five point two days of school. Kids that scored a meeting for math MCAS last year at the high school, missed on average eight point nine days. Partially meeting sixteen point eight, and then the kids that didn't meet expectations missed on average twenty-two point one days. That's at the high school for math.
So can, can you stop, go back one, Craig, just to, just to point something out, so, the folks that were, what's the last category, not meeting, not meeting? Those folks were chronically absent, the ones that before it were just slightly below being chronically absent.
Yeah.
Just to point that out.
And, and we only have last year's data, so as we go forward, we keep our partnership with Open Architects, we're gonna have this data infinitely, until we no longer are partners, or MCAS goes away. All right, this is our ELA data, you'll see, same thing, six point seven for students that are in exceeding, eleven point three for kids that were meeting, and then sixteen point eight and twenty-one point nine, that's at the high school level. Here's Stacy Middle School math, again, five point eight for kids exceeding, ten point nine for meeting, eleven partially meeting, and fourteen point eight. So, I mean, I, it's pretty clear, attendance matters. Uh, this is ELA, kids that scored exceeding were eight point three, meeting eight point six, and then a big drop-off, twelve point two and fourteen point oh. Uh, Woodland, six point six, eight point four, nine point one, twelve point three. And then there's ELA, seven point two, nine point three, nine point four, ten point nine. Our dashboard also has some pretty cool features, I can't, I couldn't just put up the dashboard, because student information is on there, but there's a toggle, so it has, you can toggle, if you miss one day, how did the kids score, and how does that project, so kids that, we could project, kids that missed four days, what are their average scores? Kids that missed five days, what are their average scores, and all the way up to twenty-five, thirty days. So we could project what it's gonna mean, now, how can we use this data, I think, this is good information to share with kids, it's good information to share with parents. I think, I think it confirms what we've been talking about, that, that kids that miss school, it will negatively affect MCAS for sure, but a number of other things. I think the reason it affects MCAS is because students are missing big pieces of curriculum. Just making up work and, and doing worksheets doesn't make up for a full day of school. The experience of being in school is very important, and it certainly affects our MCAS scores, so I don't know if anybody has questions about it, go ahead, John.
It wouldn't really show up on, on MCAS results, but do we have any kind of data for kids who have moved from not chronically absent to chronically absent, or vice versa? And how their, their performance, that can be accurately measured, you know, from grade three to four, or four to five, or one to the other? To, to really correlate that definitely to absence, because I think there's so much more to it.
Yeah.
They're chronically absent because they have a lot of other problems, and I don't think it's, it's, these results are in a vacuum.
No, and I think.
And I know you can't do MCAS results every year.
Attendance is a symptom probably of a larger problem, whether it's emotional, or something else, so I agree with that.
But we don't, we don't, there's really no data for that yet.
Not yet, I think next year, maybe we can be able to start playing with that, but not yet.
So, kinda going along with what John was saying, so I look at, so, when I look at this, and I think, what is the best use for this, I think, exactly what we're saying, presenting this to families, presenting this and saying, look at how powerful this is, right, because you're seeing clear correlations, I think, that's a great use of it. For thinking about interventions, and especially talking about different things over time that we might wanna fund, I do think it would be interesting to look more at the data, like, my first question is, if we look at the total, for example, Woodland, total student population, what is the average amount of days missed? For each of these groups, what is the N, how many students got each of these different groups? So, yeah.
It is, like I said, I just pulled out one of the chunks, but I do have that information.
And I just think for interventions, that might be helpful, and then comparing it to state data, because I do think, you know, in some ways, Milford has a population that is more vulnerable than some other districts, and so, looking at that, and thinking about the way we approach attendance here, might be different than a neighboring community, so I, I'm asking more questions than I'm bringing up ideas for, but I, I think this is really powerful and really important, and there's a lot of additional data that I think could guide what we do next.
Other questions or comments? I'm not seeing any, so, thank you for, oh, go ahead.
I would just offer, I think, in, in sharing it, Craig, with parents and families, like, any opportunity to do that live, like, I'm thinking the EL, and the CPAC, and all these things, because I remember going, as a freshman parent, when Josh shared, like, GPA correlation with attendance, and I was like, whoop, right, like, just to have it, like, you get a lot of communication, so an email could get lost, and so just, if, as we're sharing it out, I think, live conversation, PTO meetings, whatever, I think it, it could be more powerful, just going for that.
Agreed, agreed, and I forgot, the other thing that we are able to do is we're able to pull out kids with excused absences versus kids with unexcused absences instead. This is everyone, though, this is everyone.
So this could be actually an interesting, along next point, like a back-to-school night plug, like, and this is why your kids need to come to school, that number's, yeah, so powerful.
Very true, very true, all right, thank you very much, appreciate that information, looks like we can.
So more to come.
More to come, yeah, exactly, sounds great, excellent, all right, then, moving on, report from our assistant superintendent for business and human resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have for the committee's approval this evening, nine warrants in the amount of one million, five hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred fifty-three dollars and forty-nine cents.
For a motion to approve a warrant, motion by Matt, seconded by Brendan, all in favor, and that is unanimous.
I also have a list of our previous appointments, no vote is required. I do, however, have a request for cost reimbursement in the amount of eleven thousand, one hundred thirty dollars and eighty-four cents.
For a motion to approve the course reimbursement amount, motion by Megan, seconded by Matt, and then all in favor, and then, all right, so that is unanimous, excellent, wasn't sure if anybody was gonna have to abstain.
Can I just ask a personnel, a question about the personnel update? And this is just kinda going back to our six to seven PM discussion, so looking at.
So looking at the team chair stipend, I just wanted to kind of understand what that is. I was looking at the contract, and I saw that they get additional days, is this separate from that?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, without looking at the contract, I'm not sure how many days it is, but they usually come in before school and after school, and sometimes during the year, depending on, like, what issues are. Like during vacation, like school vacations, and it's just to, like, address a number of issues.
So that's what the stipend is for?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
I, I believe so.
And that's additional, additional days before the contractual start of.
It's, it's time outside of contractual, but contractual is a hundred and eighty, two-day schedule.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, so, moving on to subcommittee updates. Any subcommittees met since our last meeting? Go ahead.
Well, we haven't met, but the, uh, the website, subcommittee's moving forward, um, I just want to give a, a quick update on that. Thanks, thanks for laughing. So, uh, yeah, no.
It's a tough crowd, Michael, it's a tough crowd.
Yes, we've met formally, uh, we, we have been doing a lot of work on it, and the list has been great. We are gonna be meeting early next week to do some more content stuff, and then convene the, the, the whole group shortly after, so it is moving forward, the, the new website, so.
Excellent, anything else? Not seeing any.
And, and I've seen the templates, and they look fantastic so far, yeah. I mean, it's, it's placeholders right now, and we'll, we'll prioritize it, obviously, but it's, it's gonna look fantastic.
Right. Uh, future agenda items, yes?
Well, we talked about this before, but I think for, not this upcoming school year, but the following year, if we can at some point bring in Dr. Masterson to talk about Shining Star Intuition.
Yeah.
So are you requesting to do, like, have a conversation, like, soon, and then talk about it for twenty-five, twenty-six?
Yeah, so not for the upcoming school year, cause again, we talked about packets have already started going out, I don't know that we would necessarily want to make a change for this fall, but for the following. I think the earlier we start the discussion for the following fall, the better.
Yeah, okay.
Excellent, excellent. Um, not necessarily an agenda item, but do we have a facilities report, and can the facilities subcommittee meet to review?
Yeah, we can schedule a facilities meeting, probably, I'm, probably after February vacation, cause, I think, logistically, that's probably gonna be what needs to happen.
Okay, if we can get the report before, if, if that's the case, then we'll just kind of check it out.
I could have a question or something. Um, for the school committee calendar, you had mentioned you wanted to put in some January dates.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what, what are you looking for? The, um, like, get these during the week, weekends?
I'd say during the week, most likely, you'll look around the room to see what everybody thinks. Yeah, I think the discussion generally was just a couple extra.
Yeah.
Dates built in, so we have some padding in case we have to.
Six o'clock meeting, or something.
Yeah, and it was probably, you know, traditionally on Thursday, so whether or not it's the, you know, if we, if we book out, you know, every Thursday in January, right? Just to, again, just to have there as a placeholder, um, maybe potentially something in February, you know, again, it just, knowing that Melissa has to reach out and try to get seven people's, and, you know, schedules to try to, uh, make it to one day, or, or, or a one scheduled event, it just becomes difficult. So I feel if it's on the schedule, it makes it easier.
My only comment on that, Chris, would be obviously having the information that we have at the state, I would not have wanted to spend four additional hours talking about things that, so just timing-wise, you might want to build in, maybe it doesn't need to be right too soon in January, that's all.
Very true, yeah, yeah, I guess, yeah, what, to you guys that.
Pretty much all phenomenal.
Yeah, is there any benefit in, in pushing till February, like, the first Saturday in February, whether it would matter to you, because you know when you're here.
It doesn't matter to me. The only piece is, though, you really want to have it vetted for those conversations with FinCom and the town.
Yeah.
Um, cause we won't really have a number until probably April, May, so it's.
This has really been the first year where we've been really off with projections, and that was statewide, so this is, this was like an exception, and I hate to, but the process has kind of worked, except for this year.
Well, I was just gonna say, what we did accomplish, though, we did, we did rule out a number of initiatives, so it's not like it was a complete.
Totally.
Waste.
Yeah, but, but I hear what you're saying, because it was a bit of an exercise in futility, because.
There was a lot of work done, that's gonna come back.
And it was everybody, you know, the expectation were not what we expected them to be.
Just if we're choosing between the second day inside of January versus February, that's all.
I'd say, I'd say we just keep it at, at first January, and then we can adjust and modify, like we did this year.
Well, and then we can plan for a hard stop at twelve or one o'clock, and afterward, by trying to push through if we know that we have some more dates.
We have some more dates, yeah, exactly, yeah. I just don't want.
I'm okay with anything, by the way, for record.
Okay, yeah, so we'll just try to, I'll bring that up in the next couple meetings, just to see, you know, try to get the schedule together and, uh, to, to approve that, so. Excellent, yes.
We're still on future agenda items? Are you good, Craig? You all set?
I'm good, thank you.
Um, so community use budget, I'm sure that's on your list, but just to revisit that, and then a deeper dive on the transportation budget, Chris, I think that's probably gonna come up as part of the conversation we're already having, but just to have, and that might be like a really good six o'clock, kind of one-hour session. And then, I'm sorry, I meant to bring this up in our six o'clock meeting, and I didn't, I think we should be allocating money in addition to this building committee for a project manager to, like, help facilitate this. Because I feel like if we were to find some funding, we're someone, this is their primary responsibility, we're getting a lot of volunteers together, and I just want to ensure that this process goes as smoothly as possible, so I'd like to bring that up as a topic.
So one thing that's provided, and I forgot their call-up, but there's like an owner's, owner's project manager that's kind of working for the school system. What were the other positions? There was like three of them that were there consistently.
When does that person start?
Ah, I'd have to check, I don't want to give you the wrong answer.
Do they start between now and August? That's what I'm looking for, like, I, like, the security.
What pieces would you expect them to be working on between now and August, though? And technically, in the MSBA.
Whatever, Kathy, I'm sensitive that we have a lot of moving parts, right? I think you have a lot on your plate.
No, I'm not saying that she's. Mentioned they're starting to build education, so this, it's.
Right, but this is giving, this is giving them a head start, right, but.
It is a head start.
It's a head start, right, but the, but the MSBAPs, where we, we need somebody to make sure we're now on track, doesn't start until two weeks before August. And the only, the only thing I'm just bringing up is that they believe that that two hundred and seventy-day window is enough to do all this if you did nothing until you started until August, so we are.
We're gonna have a good chunk, we're gonna have a good chunk of it done.
We're getting our stuff together.
The only thing I, I wonder if we were to try to bring somebody in between now and then to pay for them, is I don't know how much they'd necessarily be doing right now, outside of.
So maybe a future agenda item for, to talk about what has to happen and laying out that piece, Matt, to see if it was.
I can, I can send the full committee the document of the eight things again, it's either eight or nine, cause I think we did chapter seventy-four, and I can't remember.
To be honest, Kevin, I feel like that list should be on every agenda between now and August, so we're all, no, I like totally serious, that we're all on the same page in terms of what needs to happen and what has happened, just.
Like, where, yeah, what's the status?
Standing up date, and maybe that's my ask.
Tuck it in the packet.
Yeah. Someone to call a standing MSBA update.
That'd be great, Kevin, just to ensure that.
I can just put that under my agenda.
That'd be great, thank you.
No problem. All right, anything else on future agenda items? Not seeing any, all right. So that's gonna move us on to the adjournment process. Um, so at this time, we'll be ending the open session of our meeting to enter into executive session, where, where we will discuss and consider, consider, to discuss, consider and discuss allegations possibly resulting in the disciplinary action against a school employee and a school business administrator resume review, so. So this does require a roll call vote, we will not be returning to open session. Start over with Matt.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Megan.
Yes.
Brendan.
Yes.
Brendan.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Thank you, everybody, and good night.